Are we good to go, Rob? Thank you, sir. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor Gamble.
Present.
Counselor Burley.
Present.
Counselor Carlton.
Present.
Counselor McQueen.
Present.
Counselor Desai. Counselor Patterson.
Present.
Warden Hicks.
Here.
Counselor Columbus. Counselor Kivini.
Present.
Counselor Body Senses Regrets, Counselor Thomas.
Present.
Counselor O'Leary. Counselor Woodbury.
Present.
Counselor Milne.
Present.
Counselor Soever.
Present.
Counselor Boarding Young.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
You have all present with the exception of Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, go to item number four, the land acknowledgement. So, we acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Ania Shenabek, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden Ashani, and the Windot, Windot, Wyandotte peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Meti and Inuit, whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Okay, we've got a message from Counselor Kivini that she's unable to hear.
Warden Hicks, it is all good now.
Oh, okay, excellent, thank you. All right, counsel, we're now dealing with item number five. Is there any declaration of interest pecuniary or otherwise? Seeing none, we'll proceed, and I would just say that if one does come up during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Item number six, six A, is County Council and Committee of the Whole Minutes dated June 9, 2022. I'm looking for mover and seconder to put it on the floor. Moved by Counselor Milne, seconded by Counselor Woodbury. Is there any discussion? Counselor Soever?
Mr. Warden, I'd like to pull the item on the delegation bylaw for the lame duck period, which was considered under the consent agenda, the committee of the whole, for further discussion.
Thank you, Rob. I didn't have my microphone on. Counselor Soever, is it with respect to the minutes, or is it something that we can deal with in the course of dealing with the bylaws?
Yeah, I suppose we could deal it with, because it is with respect to the wording of the bylaw, but we did direct in the wording of the bylaw was in the recommendation. So, maybe, you know, if we reconsider the recommendation rather than the bylaw, I don't know, I'll leave it up to the clerk.
My thought is that there could be, depending on how big it is, it could be a simple amendment to the, to the bylaw that's being proposed. Madam Clerk?
I guess I'll just say, I think it would depend on the proposal, so if it's a change to that resolution that was passed to, which was to receive the report and then direct staff to prepare a bylaw. If it was a change to that, we could address that in the minutes. If it was a change to the content of the bylaw, then we would do it in the bylaw section, would be my thought.
Yes, thank you for that. Well, I'm just concerned, so it is a fairly substantial rewording. I'm worried that the wording in the bylaw is not in keeping with the best practices of governance and accountability. And I have done a bit of research and looked at the Hanover bylaw, which I'm sure you're familiar with, Mr. Warden, and it, it does have better language in terms of governance and accountability. So, that's what I was wanting to bring forth.
Okay, so with your leave, Madam Clerk, it does sound like something we should discuss as part of the minutes, and then there may be a recommend, a further recommendation for a change to the bylaw. So, do we proceed with the discussion of the minutes now?
Can we, we can? Portion of the resolution.
The vote on it separately? What I'm hearing is that the recommendation is, as you suggested, Counselor Soever, that we, we lift item B, was it? For further discussion, and that we, the motion simply deal now with approving the balance of the minutes. Does everybody understand that? Is there any questions about that? And is there any other discussion with respect to the minutes except for that item B, which we are, oh, I guess we have to have a motion to lift first, don't we? So, I need a mover, Counselor Soever, seconded by? This is to lift item B, Counselor Soever moves. And seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. Okay, so any discussion on that motion, which is simply to lift item B and discuss it separately? Then I'll call the question, all those in favor? Uh, so, one, two, three, four. So that, all those opposed? It is not carried. Okay, so now we're on to the main motion, which is to approve the, the minutes of June 9, 2022, as presented. Any further discussion? Counselors, whoever?
Yes, Mr. Warden, since it was the decision of council not to lift that, that item is now included in what we're approving today, it is, you know, and we're doing it as a package. So, my concern with that was that, that bylaw, delegation bylaw gave the power to one person, that being our C E O, to approve major expenditures and hirings and firings, and this is quite normal in many jurisdictions, but best practices are those which are espoused in the Hanover bylaw, which I'm sure you're familiar with, and I'm sure, you know, it, it says that two people have to approve major expenditures. I'm not quite sure why a person would want to take on that responsibility as a single person when most good corporate governance practices indicate that two people make most important decisions at a minimum, and in fact, most jurisdictions have check signing authorities that are two people. And the other concern I have is that it, it says in this that it is a condition of the delegation above that the chief administrative officer report to council on any actions taken under it within the first six months of the 2022 council term. Well, you know, most bylaws that I've looked at say that if actions are taken under this delegation of authority, they should be reported at the next council meeting, even though council doesn't have the authority to make those type of decisions. I think it's just good practice, as espoused by the Hanover bylaw, that, you know, the, that the actions be reported immediately. So, that was why I pulled it, but now that we're voting on the entire package, you know, I guess that's a moot point, but it is now in the entire package of minutes, so now I guess I'll have to vote against the entire package, thank you.
Thank you, Counselors, however, is there any further discussion from anyone? Then it's time to call the question, all those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Madam Clerk?
Counselor Mackey. Counselor Mackey is in favor. Counselor Gamble. Counselor Gamble is in favor. Counselor Burley.
Favor.
Counselor Burley is in favor, Counselor Carlton.
In favor.
Counselor Carlton is in favor. Counselor McQueen.
Opposed.
Counselor McQueen is opposed. Counselor Desai is absent. Counselor Patterson. Counselor Patterson is in favor. Warden Hicks.
In favor.
Warden Hicks is in favor, Counselor Columbus. Counselor Columbus is in favor. Counselor Kivini.
In favor.
Counselor Kivini is in favor. Counselor Thomas.
In favor.
Counselor Thomas is in favor. Counselor O'Leary. Counselor O'Leary is in favor. Counselor Woodbury.
In favor.
Counselor Woodbury is in favor. Counselor Milne.
Yea.
Counselor Milne is in favor. Counselor Soever.
Opposed.
Counselor Soever is opposed. Counselor Boarding Young.
Opposed.
Counselor Boarding Young is opposed. Counselor Robinson.
In favor.
Counselor Robertson, Robinson is in favor. Counselor Hutchinson.
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson is in favor. That motion carries sixty-seven to eighteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so that is carried. We're on to item six B now, which is the Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting Minutes dated June 9, 2022. I need a mover and seconder to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Burley. Is there, hopefully, there's no need, otherwise we have to go into closed session. So, I see no hands, so I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Are you opposed, Counselor Soever? Okay. That is carried. We do not need a closed meeting matter. We're now on to item number eight. Eight A is the Integrity Commissioner's Recommendation Report dated June 17, 2022. I do understand, yes, I see Mr. Abrams. And I see Janice as well, how are you? Good morning.
Good morning.
I will turn the floor over to you folks, present your report.
Thank you very much, Warden. My name is Jeff Abrams, and Janice is on another box in your screen. Together, we are Principal's Integrity, the Integrity Commissioner for, for the county and for Gray Highlands. This isn't our typical report. The report before you is the culmination of a complaint investigation initiated by Deputy Mayor O'Leary of Owen Sound, who's also a member of this council, against Mayor Paul McQueen of West Gray, and the mayor, of course, is also a member of this council. The report, as you can see, is about whether it is proper for a member of this council to attend meetings simultaneously, time is simultaneously, pardon, pardon me, and to some extent, whether the member was compensated twice for those attendances. To be clear, this is not about whether the respondent to Mayor McQueen billed for two meetings when not at all participating in one or the other. We did see situations when Mayor McQueen billed two per diems at the same time, but he attended those meetings, and I'll put quotation marks around the word attended, and I'll, I'll address that shortly. The key question became whether it was proper to attend two meetings at the same time. Some whom we've interviewed, the matter was also about whether Mayor McQueen was being honest about his attendances. The evidence is that, that in, in that respect was limited, and we have not fully pursued that line of inquiry. It is an important line of inquiry, but what we have seen does not support that conclusion. Some of those whom we interviewed had the perception that attending more than one meeting at the same time was unethical in and of itself. Before I continue, and as a reminder to everyone, we view the role of Integrity Commissioner to be an important one, and we exercise our authority with respect to complaints made about members of council very carefully. We see our role as seeking to achieve what we call course correction. Sometimes a sanction is necessary, sometimes daylighting of the issue is sufficient, sometimes other recommendations are made. And we also find informal resolution to be very helpful in achieving course correction. We find a focus on course correction important in raising the public perception of the ethical standards of their council, as we say in the beginning paragraphs of our report today, and that text appears in almost all of our reports. In this instance, we struggled with whether the informal resolution route was the appropriate choice. An informal resolution ends with what we call a disposition letter, shared with the complainant and respondent, and it explains our reasoning and why, and any undertakings on the part of the respondent to not repeat the behavior that's the subject of the complaint. But a disposition letter is not a public document. At the end of the day, we decided, decided that this matter required a public recommendation report. We've not made recommendations as to sanctions because we do not believe this to be the appropriate case for them. Nevertheless, we feel this is an important issue to daylight, to call attention to the concerns and to guide future behavior. We found that the respondent did indeed run afoul of his code responsibility to diligently participate in meetings. We note that it is difficult to draw where the line is between allowing for ordinary distractions and a lack of diligence. To be clear, attending two meetings simultaneously and not informing or seeking accommodation for both meetings while doing so demonstrates a lack of diligence and a lack of candor required by the code of conduct. Momentary distractions such as checking your email, you know, members, I've been in committee meetings where a major sporting event was running in the background without audio, at, at committee meeting. Concessions like that with acquiescence of everyone in attendance, it would be hard to describe those as ethical breaches, but attempting to participate in two meetings at the same time without transparency, without some sort of acknowledgement on the part of the meeting chairs, we be, believe is, is problematic. We also had to acknowledge a couple of other things in concluding this matter. First, we're nearing the end of the term. There are good lessons to be learned now, but to be realistic, there is little runway to apply more direct course correction techniques and, and evaluate their, their impact. Second, and this is highly important, during the pandemic, with the advent of virtual meetings, what was formerly impossible is now possible. One can have a meeting running on one screen and another meeting on another. It is possible to be in two places at the same time. Previously, lack of diligence was tested by whether a member was engaging in, say, an email exchange on their iPhone or, you know, or BlackBerry not too long ago, while attending a council meeting. They would be admonished for the chair if a lack of diligence was perceived. Now it is quite possible, and some form of hybrid meetings is, is likely to continue into the future. It's possible to be in two places at the same time. It will remain possible even after the pandemic is behind us. So while the propriety of attending two meetings at once could be said to fall within a gray area, it has to be recognized that a member cannot put one hundred percent focus on two meetings at the same time. The question is not so much about whether a member is compensated for two meetings. There is an argument that most of the effort in attending a meeting is in the preparation for the meeting. The question is whether a member can be diligent in carrying out the duties as an elected official when they attempt to attend two meetings at the same time, and in our view, they cannot. We recommend in report only that council consider the enactment of a, of policy language to guide members regarding proper principles of compensation and reimbursement when attending meetings, including preparing for and attending only a portion of a meeting. Should you split out preparation from attendance? Should there be a hard rule that only one per diem can be claimed at a time, those sorts of things? When the opportunity presents, it would also be productive to discuss when it is tolerable for a member to participate in one meeting while attending another. Is it ever okay? I can think of examples where it might be. Should permission be sought? Should those circumstances be overt? Should they be required to relinquish the role of chair? Questions like that to reflect upon what it truly means to be a diligent participant in a meeting at council. Thank you, Warden, for the opportunity of making these opening remarks. I, I hope they're helpful to you, and I invite council to consider the report, and Janice and I are available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, sir. I did have some discussion with Mr., with Deputy Warden McQueen prior, and I don't know if Deputy Warden, you want to make any remarks at this point in time? This is your opportunity.
Yes, I can, I can, Mr. Warden, if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And just for, I am, I was on, I am on my way out to Perry Sound to AMO board meeting this afternoon. I am not in another meeting, but I am in my wife's car as she was driving here on the way up, and we have parked, and I am now stationary, but I am in this meeting by virtue of Zoom, and the ability, as Mr. Abrams has said, is the ability to be in different spots at the same time, and obviously, the ability to be on Zoom has allowed me to do this. The part of the reason was, is the board meeting is three thirty this afternoon, which I will be attending and exiting from this meeting if this meeting continues. I'm putting that out there as, as making that note, but being close to Perry Sound is much better for me attending that meeting, but still be able to participate today's meeting through Zoom. So, I, I do have a statement here. Just to set the record right, I, Paul McQueen, am the mayor of the municipality of Gray Highlands, Gray County Counselor and Deputy Warden. I also, I am also Gray County appointees, appointee to the Association of spellies of Ontario, known as AMO, and I am the chair of the county caucus. I'm also a Negros Department Commissioner since September of 2019, and had been previous appoint, at previous appointments dating back to 2011, and I was appointed by the province from a list of three names presented by the county. I also said as a committee, sit on many committees, the county, as well as the ones at municipal level. The meeting of the, the meeting schedule for the NEC is published for the year, and there are monthly meetings scheduled as well as policy meetings in November. Since COVID outbreak, the NEC meetings have been virtual, this may change. Needless to say, I love this work, as I have spent twenty-five years in municipal politics. This work, along with my beef cattle farming operation and my family, my farming is my family business, requires extensive time commitments, and unfortunately, we sometimes run into scheduling conflicts. In personal, in-person meetings, in-person meetings eliminate this type of problem, but Zoom has allowed several meeting conflicts to occur, and I apologize for this. In retrospect, I have tried to be available for committee work as well as my role as the Negros Commission, Commissioner. The meeting preparation for the NEC is extensive and much more complex than an average committee meeting. I can assure you that my integrity is still intact, and my target to attend all meeting schedule for me involves slipping in and out of few meetings. This was only possible because of Zoom. I have not received more remuneration than I am entitled to, and I agree with the integral commission's comments that sanctions are not warranted. I thank you for listening, I look forward to your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I turn it over to counsel now, Counselor O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you, I have a question for Counselor McQueen, and I think I know the answer, everybody knows the answer, but I want to hear your answer. Are you capable of chairing the Affordable Housing Committee and sitting in on an NEC meeting at the same time?
Absolutely not.
So, that is the reason you moved, removed yourself from the chair. When I asked you, you said you removed yourself from the chair because you weren't feeling well. Whether you were feeling great or not so great had nothing to do with it. That was untruthful. That's not why you removed yourself from the chair. Three or four months later, or whatever it was with the Integrity Commissioner, after you had had time to think about it, you told, you told them as well that you removed yourself from the chair because you weren't feeling well. That's not correct. Would you agree?
No, I was not feeling well, and that was the reason I removed myself from the chair. Obviously, if I was chairing the Affordable Task Force, there's no way I would be attending the, or listening in on the NEC meeting. I was, wasn't feeling well that morning, and I think there was some mentioning that I left the screen a few times. Sometimes when you're not feeling well, you may have to go to the washroom or excuse yourself from a meeting, or however, but I did remove myself from that meeting because I was not as chair, it's I was not feeling well, and I did have some correspondence early that morning with the deputy clerk, and as we've just witnessed at our open, at our warden's forum, how sometimes you become ill at the last minute, and as we just witnessed at our warden's forum, that even the warden had to send regrets in the sense of him attending the warden's forum.
So you have no intentions whatsoever of owning this? So that's, that's your decision. My next question is, why is it that after I confronted you, the very next morning at eight fifteen, you contacted the NEC right away to make sure you weren't getting your per diem?
Because I didn't feel it was right that I was not feeling well, and I was part of, of the other meeting, and as obviously you raised it, I was not going to pursue that. Part of the remuneration from NEC is preparation, as it's laid out, and I will say that schedule of conflicts, and that was the part that I have raised in my, in my submission here at the beginning of this discussion, was the NEC meetings are, are well scheduled and well publicized on their website, and I find it's very difficult when meeting conflicts happen, when those are already laid out, and as the chair of the Affordable Housing Task Force, I've never contacted or I've never entered into a Google meeting request to say if you're available or not, and then all of a sudden, there they are, there's that meeting conflict. As I pointed out, I, I do, I am a busy person, I'm up at sunrise, and I, I go to bed at sunset, and I am working pretty much the whole day, and all of a sudden, I come across a meeting conflict, and there, there was, as, as it was on March seventeenth, but the reason I did not chair that meeting, as I pointed out, I was not feeling well that morning.
So I'm just talking about the per diem. So you, you thought, you thought on three previous times, it was okay to get your per diem?
Okay, so if you're getting into the details, they are wrong. I submitted that to the integral commissioner because they were not at the same time. If you want to get into that, I'll get into that, I got to pull it up here, but with the exception of one, which I thought I was on break when I attended the M HAC meeting, but the other ones were after, the one that was on a particular day was at four o'clock, not in a, a NEC meeting, had adjourned at three thirty. There was the Chamber of Commerce, which I brought greetings for at seven o'clock in the evening, which is part of our remuneration policy of the municipality of Gray Highlands. I am remunerated as the mayor to bring greetings at official events, which I submitted, and and part of that submission is either a half day or a full day, that's the way it's set out. We are moving toward a salary, a salary remuneration in the next term of council, but that is how it's pointed out today, and that has how it's been for the last twenty years, I would say, for Gray Highlands, as there is, as far as remuneration for those items that we attend. So, no.
So, Mr. Warden, I would ask that the Integrity Commissioners respond to that if, if he's denying.
Yes, this, this discussion has taken a bit of a turn. This, of course, is not a hearing, there shouldn't be cross-examination or testimony. What we said in the report, I believe, was that on those dates, there was evidence of per diems being charged for two meetings, the same dates. We reviewed a number of records from various bodies to look at when the per diems were charged, and so what, what the response is saying is that they were not at the same time. The mayor had attempted to reach us, we tried to schedule a meeting after he had given his submission, and that meeting never took place. It could have been a discussion that we had with him at that time. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to meet in, on the timeframes that we had sent to him. So, I, I guess my response to you, Chair, is that the focus we've taken in this report, while acknowledging that there are per diems being charged on the same dates, the focus we're taking is not so much on the per diems. We recognize that there needs to be some greater, better prop, policy framework around that. The respondent has indicated to us that he's going to be more careful about these charges down the road, but the focus of the report, Minister Chair, is on whether it is possible to diligently participate in two meetings at the same time. That was what initiated the complaint, the, the mayor's. the mayor's appearance on screen at the Affordable Housing Task Force while attending another meeting, which turned out to be the NEC meeting. Uh, that we would recommend be the, the focus of the discussion. Um, it is more difficult to look at the, the per diems and when they were charged and whether they were relevant and whether uh, they're earned or partially earned as a result of preparation for a meeting. That is a whole discussion, but it is not the focus of, of this report.
So, Mr. Warden, I don't need a policy to decide whether I'm going to collect per diem for two meetings at the same time. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, at the onset of, um, Jeffrey Abrams' discussion, he had referenced, I believe, um, West Grey as opposed to Grey Highlands, and I just wanted that clarity, uh, that it is, uh, with regard to Grey Highlands. And, uh, thank you for, um, allowing me that, uh, clarification point.
My apologies.
Point noted. Anyone else? Counselors, whoever.
Yes, and, um, I think, uh, I want to thank the Integrity Commissioner for their report. It raises some very important issues with respect, with, uh, respect to municipal governance as a whole in that we are appointed to different committees, um, by different councils. I've kind of restricted my involvement with committees at the county level, recognizing that the mayor, the being mayor of the town of Blue Mountains is pretty much more than a full-time job. So, um, I do, I have in many occasions, um, I don't know exactly how many, but I know it's come up quite a few times where I've had to either join, uh, meetings late or, or not attend because of scheduling conflicts either with, um, you know, things that are at the town of Blue Mountains. So, um, it is, it is a tricky thing to balance. And I think, you know, everybody has to make their own decisions, what they try to do. I mean, I mean, being mayor of the town of Blue Mountains, you know, people have said, well, would you like to do this and would you like to do that? And oftentimes they say, well, no, I, I don't think I can get involved here because, uh, you know, really wouldn't be able to, uh, you know, attend very often because of other commitments. Um, one of the things that maybe we could work towards here is the scheduling. Um, I know that, um, you know, several, no, nobody has ever reached out to me when I've been on committees to say, are, are you available or do you have a conflict? And in fact, uh, even Krista, our deputy clerk, who kindly assists me with my schedule, uh, I don't have a full-time, uh, administrative assistant or anything. So when, when she's been having trouble accessing my county agenda, so I do have to contact her. So, you know, maybe there could be better coordination and particularly, I think Mayor McQueen noted that, you know, he is nominated, I guess, by the county, but appointed by the province to the Niagara Scartment Commission. So when those meetings are scheduled a year in advance, perhaps we could work to make sure that when he is chair of a committee, and I was kind of surprised to learn that even chairs of committees aren't consulted on the, um, the date of the and time of the committee appointment. So, you know, it is, you know, kind of unusual that a chair of a committee would not be, um, consulted on when the committee is to meet. But, um, you know, so maybe we could, you know, just improve the practices there a bit. So these difficult, uh, situations don't arise and, um, I think, you know, it raises the whole question of as there is this great out migration, as the University of Western Ontario is saying, um, you know, and we start to see a lot of people settling up here and the job, our jobs become more complex. Maybe, you know, we gotta look at how we distribute the workload and maybe there's one level of government too many. Anyway, those are just my comments, but I want to thank the, uh, Integrity Commissioner for raising that.
Thank you. I'm Adam Cao.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, with regard to the scheduling of, um, committees and task forces, um, the clerk's office practice is to, um, inform themselves about any meetings that are noted on the public schedules of the municipalities where there are councillors in- involved. So that does take place. Um, the other point that I would make is at any time when it's brought to our attention that there's a conflict, we do our very best to work around that. There's a good communication between, um, ourselves here at the county and the staff at the member municipalities who have responsibility for calendars. And there are conversations there. So I, I, I did want to at least make that point that we are doing something towards trying to ensure that these conflicts don't happen. And I do acknowledge that there's always opportunities to do more. It's just finding that balance of, of time and, and I know everybody has a busy schedule and we're trying to all fit things in. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Woodbury.
Thank you. I, I, I'm gonna look at things kind of cut into the chase a little bit. I believe this talk about scheduling is a red herring. If we have a doctor's appointment, we look to see if we're open or closed. We decide if we can make it or not. We book it, we go. By far, the majority of the meetings that come to us through our municipalities and through the county, we get a calendar alert that said, says accept, refuse, or, 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 um, maybe different words, but that, that idea. I think it reflects really badly on municipal leaders. If scheduling things and saying you can or can't make it is this huge of a deal. When you go out in the, the private sector, all levels of, of employees have schedules, can say they can make it to meetings or not. If it's really important, you try to, to go to the most important one and you, you see what you can or see if one can be arranged. I'm sorry, but to me, whether, whether scheduling of meetings is a red herring. If you've got way too many, many meetings that run at the same time, then you as an individual have participated in too many things. And, and so to the, the, this scheduling thing to me has nothing to do with it. Um, at all. And, and that's my view.
Thank you, sir. I do not see any other hands. Anyone else? Counselor Mellon.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think we can all agree that we're, we're all busy. Everybody's busy. Uh, but choices have to be made on where you can contribute and where you can't. I think Mr. Abrams made it very clear that in this particular case in his report, he made it very clear that the county code of conduct has been breached, and really that's what we're discussing. And I think any thinking person would suggest that you cannot participate in two meetings at the same time and make a meaningful contribution to both. You need to pick one or the other. We all, there's what, there's vice chairs at all the committees. If you can't make the meeting as chair, you, you notify the vice chair and the clerk to say that you're not going to be, uh, attending. So I guess what I would ask, Mr. McQueen, because you have clearly breached the county code of conduct, will you consider resigning from the NEC and your position at AML while representing the county?
Well, I'm not concerned with that because I think it goes back to the part of conflicting and the issues around scheduling the meeting. So I think it's irrelevant to this. What you're asking me is, is it's moving forward. I think the report and the, uh, integral commissioner suggests, uh, suggestions moving forward, and I look forward to those recommendations moving ahead.
You're finished, Counsel Mellon? Okay, next is, uh, Counsel Thomas.
Thanks, Warden. And through you, the issue for me here is not about the per diem or even about the attending meetings simultaneously. The issue for me here is the attempt to conceal the fact from everyone else that two meetings were being attended at the same time. To me, that is the height of disrespect to the members of council sitting around this table and to all municipal politicians in Grey County. Folks, you know, there's a lot going on in the world, and I'm going to tell you right now that climate change, homelessness, the economy, these are not the big issues facing politicians today. The big issue facing politicians today is the crisis in trust. Nobody trusts us. At Good Roads, which the deputy, uh, warden attended, there was a presentation from the, uh, on trust, and politicians are at the very bottom of the list of people who are trusted by the public. This is one of the reasons why. People look at this kind of stuff and they don't trust us. So Counselor McQueen's actions, while, you know, he seems to be trying to minimize them, they reflect on all of us. This isn't just about Counselor McQueen. It's about all of us at this table and at similar tables around Grey County, trying to do the best for our communities. I think that, uh, his actions were disrespectful. You know, I'm busy too, but I don't see it as justification to skirt around the rules or disregard the code of conduct. I think he should be held accountable for the fact that he's tried to conceal from council the fact that he's attending multiple meetings. And this isn't even the first time, as we saw in the Integrity Commissioner's report. So I would certainly like to see some sort of sanction come from the council here, regardless of what it is, but there's got to be, there's got to be action. Otherwise, our public is going to look at all of us and go, yeah, yeah, they're just covering up, they're covering for their own. And that's the way it's going to look, and the crisis in trust is going to deepen, and, uh, I just can't stand to see that. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Counsel O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I just want to make it clear, um, I'm a face-up guy. I, I didn't want to go to the Integrity Commissioner. And I want to make sure everyone understands what happened here. Counselor McQueen showed up at the Affordable Housing Task Force, which in my mind is one of the most important committees. Other committees are important. He is the chair. He contacted the clerk just before and said he wasn't feeling well. He asked Warden Hicks to chair the meeting. Counselor Burley is the vice chair. Counselor McQueen didn't even know who the vice chair was. Never mind contacting him prior to the meeting to ask him if he could chair it. Totally unfair to, to Counselor Burley. And when I confronted, it was such a distraction too, that he was on, on the screen, off the screen, on the screen, off the screen. When he was off mute, you could hear the other meeting going. It, it was a distraction for all of us. So I confronted him at the end of the meeting. He told me he wasn't feeling well. That's why he didn't chair. It's clear the reason he didn't chair was because he couldn't chair and sit in the NEC, so he was untruthful in his answer. When I, when I then said, just to be clear, Paul, are you sitting in another meeting? And he stared into the screen and refused to answer the question. That's why I went to the Integrity Commissioner. This whole thing is so wrong. I can guarantee you one thing. If that's me, I would be resigning today. And Counselor McQueen, you just gave me a bunch of excuses. It's wrong. You should be resigning, and you should at least resign from deputy mayor or deputy warden. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think we have had all the discussion that we want. I do not see any other hands.
Mr. Warden, am I able to respond?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir.
So again, I, I look forward to the recommendations from the Integral Commissioner who has moved forward again. And I'm not saying I'm a perfect person and, you know, with going to Zoom has been into a gray area for sure. And I think there's an expectation of our responsibilities to the public in the sense of, of how we represent ourselves and also representing those issues on those particular meetings. That's why we're on those particular committees and, and however. But I, I, I don't like this. I, I'm, I'm being attacked here. I'm being personally attacked here. I don't think this was the intention as the Integral Commissioner laid out. It's a gray area. It's about setting policy moving forward. I've been in many, many meetings where people are also in other meetings or listening to other meetings. Let's, let's, let's be realistic here. It's Zoom has created the situation. I'm sure you're, you know as well, Mr. Warden. I know when I was Warden, I had eight meetings in some days. It was crazy moving into Zoom and, and dealing with all the responsibilities and, and expectations that we were put on us with Zoom. We never had this problem with an issue before Zoom came along. And the issue I, you know, uh, did not respond to, Mr. O'Leary, as, as he has pointed out here, was my last day as Warden, I was attacked with regards to the issues around the um, extra beds that we are awarded as, as Gray Gables. I was, I was, uh, personally attacked of why I did not disclose it. I was embargled by the province, but I was attacked by more than one counsel, including, uh, Counsel O'Leary. And as I read, written into my response to the Integral Commissioner that I felt, and we talk about our mental health, is it was happening all over again on that morning of March seventeenth. And so I, you know, I thought our code of conduct is to, as we have just experienced by a number of speakers here today, is not to attack us or, 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 um, carry on like is been just experienced, is we talk about our process and procedure and move forward and how we make it a better place. And I understand that. I realize that. And I was not feeling well that morning. Sorry to say, and I'm sorry that that's not how the individual sees it. But I mean, we're only human and we move forward. But again, I, you know, I, I realized that and I did not even claim a per diem for the either of meetings that day. And I have made, uh, uh, um, changes that I will not be anywhere near a second meeting during, uh, another meeting, even if it's being called upon. I've, you know, I, I see that and, and, and moving forward in, in a corrective manner, as also this pointed out in the, in the, uh, report. So again, Mr. Warden, I, I feel this is getting to be a more of a political or, uh, that way, and I don't want to go there. I don't think we should go there. I think we need to move on with the report. The recommendations are there. I feel that I do good work and I will, uh, certainly reflect on this morning's suggestions and give it some thought after today, and, and I may consider some, uh, changes, uh, moving forward. But this is leading up today. It has been on my mind for three months and, and certainly I don't take this very lightly. It's been, it's been on me. I take my job very serious. I've been doing this for twenty-five years. I feel that I, I have been, uh, a great counselor. And I understand the issue around trust, and that's, that's certainly, um, certainly very, very important. And then, yeah, I know that we are looked upon to be at the higher standards. That's why we do have a core of conduct and everything in place as, as the integral commission. I realize that. And moving forward, I will do better. That's all I can say. I, I'm human. I, you know, I'm, my heart's on my sleeve, but I, I'll leave it at that, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. Anything further from anyone? All right. Well, I think we need to deal with the matter at hand. Um, we, we have a couple of options. One option is, uh, that we have a motion with respect to receiving the Integrity Commissioner's, uh, report. I've also heard from Counselor Thomas that, uh, he would like to see some sanctions. So I'm in your hands. Uh, if I don't hear from anyone else, I'm simply going to ask that the clerk present to us a motion to receive uh, the Integrity Commissioner's, uh, report. Counsel Woodbury.
I think with this, just the, all the information in here, to simply receive this report uh, would be a mistake on our part in the public trust. I think there needs to be actions. with the report, whether the actions are today or at another time. And we can specify that. And I'm saying actions, whether that is changes of, of policy since scheduling is apparently difficult or whether it's sanctions. I just simply don't believe we can get a report like this and receive it. I think there has to be action with it. And it's up to this council to, to decide on those actions. Now, whether, like I said, it's today or another day, I think that's got to be part of our motion in, in what we do here.
Thank you. I don't know if the Integrity Commissioner wants to weigh in on where we're at now. I, I guess we're at a, a point where we can simply receive the Integrity Commissioner's report or someone can raise their hand and say that they believe that there should be some sanctions and what those sanctions are, and we can entertain a motion there as well. Sir?
Certainly, certainly, Chair, happy to. Let's, let's begin with the notion of sanctions. We, we have not recommended them. But it is, it is in council's hands to decide upon that. We believe that they're not warranted in this case, but in any event, they would have to reflect the findings in the report. You should know what the available sanctions are. They begin with a reprimand. A reprimand is a formal acknowledgement by council that there's a finding of breach. In our view, we, we thought that the day lighting of the circumstances was sufficient, but it is certainly open to council to adopt a motion that reprimands Counselor Mayor McQueen for his, his behaviors. The other section, the other sanction that the act speaks to is a suspension of pay. That would be the suspension of the county's pay to Counselor, to Mayor McQueen, and you're restricted there in, by, by imposing a suspension for up to 90 days. So 90 days suspension is the maximum that the county could adopt as a sanction. Again, we don't, we don't recommend that the suspension of pay be, be the remedy here. What we do recommend, and we, we call these remedial recommendations, they're not, they're not folk, they're not spoken to in the act, but they are within the power of the municipality to do, and that is to adopt a process to review policies, to make it clear, either, either speaking to per diems or whether, whether it is appropriate for a member to attend two meetings at the same time without disclosing that, without some measure of transparency and permission associated with it. That's policy work. You're probably not in a position today to adopt that policy, but council certainly could give direction to staff to bring forward policy recommendations, having, council having received the, the report. So that was a long answer. Let me just summarize it. You have the ability to, I'll do, I'll deal with the last comment to the first. You have the ability to adopt recommendations to develop some policy language. You do have the ability to impose sanctions, and those sanctions available to you are a reprimand and the suspension of pay for up to 90, 90 days. Hope that was helpful, Warden.
Thank you, sir. Yes, that is helpful. So again, counsel, I'm in your hands. If I don't see a hand being raised, then I'm simply going, yeah, Counselor Thomas.
Thanks, Warden. And through you, you know, I'm sorry the Counselor McQueen sees this as a personal attack. I think all we're looking for here is accountability. He is accepting responsibility for what he's done. He said he's going to change. But I think that, you know, certainly from my perspective, when I look around the table here, the people to whom I look for the highest ethical standard would be the Warden and the Deputy Warden. And that's the only reason I'm suggesting that there should be some follow-through here to demonstrate to the public that we do take these issues seriously and we deal with them. So I would move receipt of the report and further that county council issue a reprimand to Counselor McQueen. And further that county staff revise the code of conduct to address the issue of multiple meetings simultaneously, and that's maybe not the best wording, but I think that you get what I'm saying there.
Okay, so, thank you. If I understood it correctly, I'll come to you. You are moving that we receive the Integrity Commissioner's report. Secondly, that reprimand be issued to Deputy Warden McQueen. And thirdly, that we give direction to staff to bring back recommendations for changes or direction around policy clarification. Let's just call it that. Madam Clerk, you've got all that? So I, she says yes. So I would need a second. Are you second in Counselor Millen? So it's seconded. Now it's on the floor. Is there any discussion about the motion that's on the floor? Seeing no hands with respect, no, Counselors, so ever.
Yes, Mr. Warden, and certainly trust is a very serious issue. And, and before I decide how to vote on this, this morning I overheard part of a conversation between Counselors Millen and O'Leary where I heard only part of it, and it, it, the, the part that I heard was something about let him do the dirty work. So I'm just asking the two gentlemen, did I hear that correctly? And was this in, in, in regards to the issue that we're deciding today?
I, I'm not sure about the appropriateness of the, of the question. If I understand correctly, Counselors, so ever, you're asking about a conversation that took place prior to the meeting, and you're asking for those two counselors to clarify what they meant about something that you overheard?
Yeah, yeah, and whether it's
And yes, and whether it's with regard to the item we're considering right now.
I, I'm, I gotta tell you, I'm really troubled by the question on all kinds of levels, but I'm going to take my guidance from the clerk, and if we need to take a, a short break for you to help give me some guidance on this, I, it's not feeling comfortable for me, Counselors, so ever. So I'm going to take a, a short break. It is now 11:00. I'm going to suggest that we come back at 11:10. So we'll take a short break.
Point of order, Mr. Warden. Can you leave in the middle of a motion?
Good question. The answer that I have is yes. So I'm going to suggest that we come back at 11:10.
Thank you, sir. I'll call the meeting back to order. So just prior to the break, we were having discussion about a motion. And a question was asked of councillor Soever. And my, my ruling is that the question is not germane to the motion that we are debating. So I'm not going to allow the question, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Warden. But my question was, what's what I overheard germane to the, and only the two gentlemen would know that.
So I heard the question loud and clear. My ruling is that the question is not appropriate for the motion at hand. And so I guess your other option is to challenge the ruling of the chair. Madam Clerk, I'll turn things over to you then.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I will just read the procedural bylaw for challenging a ruling. So that it is clear what the process is. Any member may challenge the ruling of the warden immediately following the ruling. In the event a member challenges the ruling, council will vote on the ruling immediately without debate. Council's majority vote is final if the warden is challenged. So there has been a challenge, so council can now vote on whether the warden's ruling stands. And if you wish to do that, you would vote in favor.
Madam Clerk, can you, can there be a recorded vote on? Can you give us a second? We need to just look this up. So the clerk advises that there can be a recorded vote, so there will be a recorded vote. We're just taking a second to get the get things set up.
My apologies for the delay. So this is to vote on the ruling of the warden on, on whether the question councillor Soever raises germane to the pending motion. Councillor Mackey?
In favor.
Councillor Mackey is in favor. Councillor Gamble? Councillor Gamble is in favor. Councillor Burley? Councillor Burley is in favor. Councillor Carlton?
In favor.
Councillor Carlton is in favor. Councillor McQueen?
Opposed.
Councillor McQueen is opposed. Councillor Desai is absent. Councillor Patterson? Councillor Patterson is in favor. Warden Hicks?
Yay.
Warden Hicks is in favor. Councillor Columbus? Councillor Columbus is in favor. Councillor Keating?
In favor.
Councillor Keating is in favor. Councillor Thomas? Councillor Thomas is in favor. Councillor O'Leary? Councillor O'Leary is in favor. Councillor Woodbury? Councillor Woodbury is in favor. Councillor Milne? Councillor Milne is in favor. Councillor Soever? Councillor Soever is opposed. Councillor Boarding Yeo? Councillor Boarding Yeo is opposed. Councillor Robinson? Councillor Robinson is in favor. Councillor Hutchinson?
In favor.
Councillor Hutchinson is in favor. That motion is carried sixty-seven to eighteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll proceed on. We're back to the main motion. Councillor Soever, do you have any other questions? Are there any other questions from anyone else? Or debate or comments? Okay, seeing none, then perhaps I will then call the question on the main motion. Madam Clerk, can you please remind us? Oh, I did see a hand. Councillor Hutchinson, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I, I just, for clarity, I'd like to know what the, what the reprimand is because I heard a few different things attached to it. So is there a reprimand, like the reprimand, is there a recommendation that's attached with this or is it just a straight reprimand? Thank you.
No, I think you've answered your question, sir. It's, it's simply that he be reprimanded. That's it. Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Could we have the clerk read the motion again, please? I'm just wondering if it should be separated into two pieces.
So the motion on the floor is that the report be received, the integrity commissioner's report be received. And that a reprimand be imposed to Councillor McQueen and that staff be directed to bring forward a report amending the code of conduct regarding policy clarification.
Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So there's almost three pieces to that. There's, you know, one receiving the report, which I believe, you know, we should be doing. But then there's action items also. One of the action items being that I think it's bullet point seventy-four that in the report that we should be looking at our policy procedures to determine clarity around, you know, duplicate meetings in this new age of, you know, virtual meetings. It never used to be a problem. You showed up at a meeting or you didn't. But there's new, new issues now with, with virtual meetings. And then the second is the, the reprimand, certainly in my opinion. Councillor McQueen made some mistakes. He's owned up to that mistake. And if you look at the recommendations of the integrity commissioners that have far more expertise than this body does. They're not recommending any further action. So I guess that's my standpoint on it. So I'd like to see the reprimand section voted on separately as opposed to the section number seventy-four, which is the policy procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So your motion is that we vote separately on the second item, which is the reprimand. And if that's the case, then Madam Clerk, with your guidance, I'm going to call for a seconder to, if you're making that into a motion. So I would need a seconder to councillor Burley, I'm going to say, seconds it. So now we're going to have discussion and a vote on whether we want to vote separately on the reprimand. Everybody clear about that? I see no nodding heads. So yes, okay. All right, very good. So is there any discussion on that, on the motion before us now that we're dealing with? To vote separately on the recommendation with respect to a reprimand? If there's no discussion, then I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is carried. All right. So now we are going to vote on the, the remaining two items. Which is to receive the integrity commissioner's report and the recommendation or the direction to staff to revise the code of conduct with respect to, you know, meetings at the recommendation, I suppose, of the integrity commissioner. Are we clear about that? I see nodding heads. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Okay. So now we're on the motion. We're going to vote separately on a motion to, with respect to the reprimand. Is there any discussion on that? Any further discussion on the motion about a reprimand? Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. If, if the motion could be read again, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
The current motion on the floor is that the report be received and that a reprimand be imposed to Councillor McQueen.
Have we not already voted on the motion to receive? I believe we have. The only thing we're voting on now is the, the reprimand. Councillor Burley? There is a call for a recorded vote. Councillor Soever?
Yes, Mr. Warden, and I'm kind of torn on this one. This is, but, you know, I'm considering my vote in terms of the tone of the discussion here and what I previously overheard. So anyway, I'm just.
Councillor Woodbury?
Sorry for interrupting, but point of order on the screen, we did not have a mover and seconder for the reprimand part of this motion. Wasn't on the screen. That's all.
Sorry, there was a motion that it be voted on separately. I guess your point is we vote for it to be voted on separately. We didn't actually have a mover and seconder for the actual motion. That's, that's correct. Madam Clerk, I want to give you a chance to weigh in here.
So when I do the final draft of the minutes, I will be taking the original mover and seconder of that original motion with the two together and use those as the mover and seconder for the court.
Thank you very much. It was just my concern that we didn't see it on the, on the board. Thank you.
Back to you, councillor Soever.
No, I was finished.
All right. So we are ready to vote and it's going to be a recorded vote.
This is a recorded vote on whether to institute a reprimand. Councillor Mackey?
No.
Councillor Mackey is opposed. Councillor Gamble? Councillor Gamble is opposed. Councillor Burley? Councillor Burley is opposed. Councillor Carlton? Councillor Carlton is opposed. Councillor McQueen? Councillor McQueen is opposed. Cash is absent. Councillor Patterson? Councillor Patterson is opposed. Warden Hicks?
Nay.
Warden Hicks is opposed. Councillor Columbus? Councillor Columbus is opposed. Councillor Keating?
Opposed.
Councillor Keating is opposed. Councillor Thomas? Councillor Thomas is in favor. Councillor O'Leary? Councillor O'Leary is in favor. Councillor Woodbury? Councillor Woodbury is in favor. Councillor Milne? Councillor Milne is in favor. Councillor Soever? Councillor Soever is in favor. Sorry, councillor Soever is opposed. Councillor Boarding Yeo?
Opposed.
Councillor Boarding Yeo is opposed. Councillor Robinson? Councillor Robinson is opposed. Councillor Hutchinson?
Opposed.
Councillor Hutchinson is opposed. Those lost sixty-three to twenty-two.
Okay, thank you very much. I think this is the point at which I thank Jeffrey and Janice for attending and for the time and and care you put into preparing your report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right, we're on to item number nine, which are the three bylaws. Remind me, are we voting separately? Is there one bylaw that you want to deal with separately? We did discuss it during the minutes. That's right. Yeah. That's right. So we don't need to have a separate councillors, however.
I'd like to vote on that separately because I do support the other two bylaws. So I, I can't. I don't want to oppose all three just on the basis that I'm not happy with the third one.
Okay, so if, if I could have a mover and seconder for the two remaining bylaws. And we, so moved by councillor Soever and seconded by councillor Boardigan. Any discussion? Now call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. So now we're voting separately on twenty-two, no, five-one-four-one. Is that correct? Right. So I need a mover. Put that on the floor. Moved by councillor Carlton, seconded by councillor Columbus. Any discussion? Councillor Soever?
So I won't be long because I already stated my piece. I just find that the wording could be tighter as is in the town of Hanover bylaw, which I think is very well crafted. And that's why I'll be opposing this wording. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any other hands for discussion. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Okay. Madam Clerk, over to you.
And this vote is on the proposed restricted acts by law. Councillor Mackey? Councillor Mackey is in favor. Councillor Gamble? Councillor Gamble is in favor. Councillor Burley? Councillor Burley is in favor. Councillor Carlton? Councillor Carlton is in favor. Councillor McQueen? Councillor McQueen is opposed. Also decide is absent. Councillor Patterson? Councillor Patterson is in favor. Warden Hicks?
Yay.
Warden Hicks is in favor. Councillor Columbus? Councillor Columbus is in favor. Councillor Keating?
In favor.
Councillor Keating is in favor. Councillor Thomas? Councillor Thomas is in favor. Councillor O'Leary? Councillor O'Leary is in favor. Councillor Woodbury? Councillor Woodbury is in favor. Councillor Milne? Councillor Milne is in favor. Councillor Soever? Also, whoever is opposed. Councillor Boarding Yeo? Councillor Boarding Yeo is opposed. Councillor Robinson? Councillor Robinson is in favor. Councillor Hutchinson?
In favor.
Councillor Hutchinson is in favor. That carries sixty-seven to eighteen.
Thank you. Okay, so we are on now to item number ten. Good news and celebration. Please, we need some good news. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I have three points of good news and celebration. First of all, I'd like to thank and commend you and Gray County staff and the speakers during the Wardens Forum. The, the focus was on inclusion and diversity, and it was well achieved. And thank you very much. Look forward to the next Wardens Forum. I also want to say with regard to celebration, the Durham Homecoming will take place June thirtieth to July third. June thirtieth to July third, we are celebrating Durham's one hundred and fiftieth birthday and the Durham Homecoming. That is the sesquicentennial. I just practiced that word because it doesn't come around very often. I also want to say that the Soggin Valley Children's Safety Village, and, and this council will remember that we did have a wonderful delegation not too long ago. There will be an open house at the Soggin Valley Children's Safety Village, June twenty-sixth from twelve PM to four PM. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Councillor Mackey, you're next.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Just received an email. We had been before the meeting talking about the possibility of a new inspector for the Great Bruce Detachment. And I just received an email that Chief Superintendent Thebe has announced that Inspector Paul Richardson will be the new inspector for the Great Bruce Detachment, and he will commence his duties on July tenth. It's been about two years since we've had a full-time inspector. Inspector Richardson comes from the Wellington County where he is the current inspector and lives in Bruce County. So it's good news for our area to have a, a regular full-time inspector now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Councillor Soever?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and I echo Councillor Robinson's comments about the Wardens Forum. It was very, very well attended and the presentations were excellent. Just like to report that the St. George's Fish Fry, which hadn't been running for a couple of years now. It's, it was back on the weekend and over six hundred people came through and enjoyed an excellent fish meal with fresh picklance. And so the, the community was out in force and everybody was very happy to be getting together again in person. The other good news we have is we've got a new Director of Planning, Adam Smith. It's not easy to find planning directors these days, but our, our team did an excellent job. And Adam started work on Monday. And with regard to that, he's going to be extremely busy. Since we were involved at the Ontario Land Tribunal and we've had four developers approach us about how they could work with us with regards to affordable housing. So he's going to have a lot of meetings early on in his tenure. So I think that's all good news. And that's all I have from the Blue Mountains. And that's all I have from the Blue Mountains.
Thank you very much, sir. It's good to hear that you're making progress on the affordable housing front. Counsel Hutchinson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd just like to say thank you to yourself, Mr. Warden, and to CEO John or Wingrove. I apologize for your delegation this past Tuesday at our council. I think you, the presentation you came forward with, you know, providing all the information, the updates, the hard work we've done at the county level. Certainly resonated and was well received. And if anybody has not received their delegation, it is certainly something to look forward to. So just, I guess, kudos to the hard work that's happened over the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would concur to that. Our CEO did a fine job. Deputy Warden McQueen?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. And again, just a little bit of the Wardens Forum. It was nice to have the ability to showcase the St. Ham School to all our lower-tier municipalities. And I guess a question to you, how are you feeling? I know that you were a little under the weather that day, and I trust that you're feeling better today. But I, I know that it must have been pretty tough not to make your own Wardens Forum. In that sense, but I hope you're doing well. A couple of things happening in Gray Islands. The gold rush is happening again in, in Eugene. And, and originally dating back to eighteen fifty-three, and we all know that that was to do with fool's gold. But the, the, the event is happening again. It's great to see events happening after the shutdown of COVID. And it's from noon to nine thirty and the park up to Eugene, Eugene itself. We also have fireworks coming on in July second and fever sham and also Canada Day events in Markdale itself. So it's nice to see that we're moving toward the Canada celebration again. And I guess there has been a few celebrations. I guess also, I know I attended at Great Gables with regards to the celebration of the, the seventieth anniversary of the Queen Elizabeth and her reign. And I know that you brought your regrets, and I did pass that on that day as well, Mr. Warden. And it was a great event. We have an opportunity to get those, hand out those pens. They're quite unique with regards to the little red. And then also, if there's somebody, I think it was sent out to, from Alex Ruff's office, if there's somebody you think you should nominate for a coin. That is, I think, up until the end of June for somebody who maybe seek that recognition of, of that as well. So that just as a reminder. So thanks again, Mr. Warden. And County Council.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. And yes, I am on the road to recovery, feeling somewhat better. I wouldn't say fully better, but somewhat. Counselor Carlton?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd just like to point out that the Ride Don't Hide Gray Bruce is back this Sunday, June twenty-sixth, starting at Kelso Beach in Owen Sound. With the routes going out through Georgian Bluffs was a twenty-five kilometer, fifty kilometer, eighty kilometer, and a hundred kilometer. And a family-friendly in-park ride. So that's taking effect, starting at eight o'clock on Sunday morning. And that's promoting mental health in Gray Bruce, which I think is fantastic. Thanks. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hutchinson, did I miss you? No? Okay.
No, I, I just complimented your visit, your delegation to council and you.
That's right.
CEO Wingrove, thank you.
Yes, that's my foggy brain at work here. I apologize. Okay, I do not see any other. Oh, Counselor Columbus?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I'm sure everyone has Canada Day celebrations coming up. We're all looking forward to celebrating in person for the first time in a while. We will miss fireworks in the municipality, well, at least the town of Meaford. There will be fireworks in Bogner on July first and in Anan on June thirtieth, but not in Meaford proper this year. Instead, we're looking forward to an airshow and a great deal of entertainment, good music, good food. Fly grazing with an indigenous flair this year, which is, is really lovely. Pancake breakfast and all the usual contributions to a very successful and happy Canada Day. Following that on July seventh, the next week is our annual harbor run, walk, stroll. Bike your way. It's again at Meaford Harbor, nine o'clock start. Sponsored by the Meaford Hospital Foundation, which has been doing this for many, many years now and raised a great deal of money to support our hospital. And this year, the proceeds again will go to mental health and addiction. So very happy for that as well. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Columbus. Counselor Milne?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I just wanted to say that the Egremont Optimist Club will be hosting a car show and the annual fireworks after a couple of years of absence in the Holstein Park. On Canada Day, Canada Evening. And also that this Saturday, at the other end of our municipality in Dundalk, the local pride committee has organized an event to celebrate Pride Month, which is, of course, June. And they'll be having a walking parade after the event or during the event. And so it's gratifying to know that we live in a community that is open and welcoming of everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think that's it. I'm just checking every place here to see if there's any other hands. There are no other hands. So thank you for all of that. Okay, we're going to turn to item number ten. Oh, sorry, item number eleven, which is adjournment. So moved by Deputy Warden McQueen, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson, that we adjourn. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Does anyone need a further break? Or we're fine to move to continue on? I see lots of nods, so we're going to continue on. So just take a second to switch over to committee of the whole.